One's Kayla.
From the Beloit Health System?
Oh, this one, that's the Beloit Health System. They got two.
Two, yeah.
Yeah, we're giving them two. And then the next person is...
Is from Roy Chapman Andrews.
That's gonna be Brenda and...
Who's it Brenda?
And is it the Sphium? One of them, Jerry or Connie Sphium? Did you get that or not?
I don't know.
That's a good question.
So we've got two of those, three of them?
Yep, three of them for Brenda, so she'll give them to, she got access. So make sure you got that one. And then the next one's gonna be Kayla, and it's gonna be Mark Perry.
Yeah, exactly.
They look shy.
Fresh start, right?
Yep.
Yeah. God bless them. There's so many good things going on.
We'll come out, we'll take a good joint.
Wonderful thing.
That is, we got a lot of good things going on. I think we need that, that when we have the U... Don't forget to turn in your, um, to do your, everybody, don't forget to do your, um, scoring. It's due by March P., the scoring.
Yep.
Make sure you got yours done.
Yep.
Your scoring. So don't forget.
Item President is seven o'clock.
But it took me a couple of days, so. I took my time.
I think she said it, you can do it.
Okay. It is now seven o'clock PM, and I'll call the meeting to order. May I please get a roll call?
Roll call shows all councilors are present.
Can everyone rise and please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Item three is special orders of the day and announcements. Three A is proclamation 2024-004, recognizing American Heart Month.
At this time, we will have Vice President Forbeck to read the proclamation.
Whereas February is American Heart Month, a time when all people, especially women, are encouraged to focus on their cardiovascular health, and whereas women are encouraged to listen to their hearts and self-advocate for their health, and whereas heart disease is the leading cause of death for women, and whereas adopting a healthy lifestyle can often help reduce the risk of heart disease, and whereas the National Heart, Lung, and Blood Institute recommends the following tips to protect your heart: Get enough quality sleep. Eat nutritious foods. Stop smoking. Maintain a healthy weight. Be more active. Control cholesterol. Manage stress. Practice self-care and find social support. Manage blood sugar. Control blood pressure. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Beloit proclaims February 2024 as American Heart Month and encourages residents to commit to fighting cardiovascular disease with the goal of healthy living and doubling the survival rate from cardiac arrest. Adopted this 19th day of February 2024.
Thank you, Vice President Forbeck. If we could have, we have Shelley Tyler here from Beloit Health System to accept. Can you come forward, Shelley? I didn't know if you maybe had a couple words you may want to say.
Hi, thank you.
You're welcome.
On behalf of everyone working at the Hendrix Heart Hospital, I'd like to thank you all for recognizing this as Heart Month.
Thank you.
Three B is proclamation 2024-005, recognizing Roy Chapman Andrews' birthday.
Whereas Roy Chapman Andrews was born at his home on 419 St. Lawrence Avenue in Beloit on January 26, 1884, and whereas at the time, the home was on the western edge of the city of Beloit, where beyond lay the fields and woods and rushing streams that Andrews explored in his youth. And whereas Andrews developed his skills as a naturalist and marksman during childhood rambles in the nearby woods, fields, and waterways. And whereas Andrews studied at public schools and the Beloit Academy, teaching himself taxidermy and using money earned from that hobby to help pay for his education at Beloit College. And whereas throughout his career, Andrews explored desert lands, raging seas, remote mountains and deserts, surviving encounters with angry whales, hungry sharks, pythons, and several rushes with armed bandits, being erroneously reported dead at least once. And whereas it is widely surmised that the movie character Indiana Jones was modeled after Roy Chapman Andrews, although that is pure speculation and there is no concrete evidence. And whereas Andrews was a prolific author, penning at least 23 books. Now therefore be it resolved that the Beloit City Council recognizes January 26 as Roy Chapman Andrews' birthday and encourages residents to view the world with his sense of excitement and exploration, which will be celebrated in April during the 21st Annual Distinguished Explorer Award Event at Beloit College, adopted this 19th day of February 2024.
Thank you, Vice President Forbeck. If we could have Danica Keaton or Shannon to come to the podium, please, to accept. Or if you want to introduce yourselves, if you could come up with your group, introduce yourselves and say a few words if you like.
Thank you. I'm Shannon Fai. I'm current president of the Roy Chapman Andrews Society, and I want to thank you all for this recognition and ongoing support. Thank you.
Well, thank you for being here. And what we will do, if everybody, since we will take a picture with the next group, if you want to hang around, and we'll take one with each individual person, and you can, we'll get them to you, or you can get them to your respective agencies. All right. Thank you.
Three C is proclamation 2024-006, recognizing contributions in ecological education.
Whereas Caleb Locrants is the community service coordinator for the United Way Black Hawk Region-funded Beloit Fresh Start, an education and job training program providing opportunities for youth to help themselves while helping others in the community. And whereas youth are enrolled at this community action program full-time and attend 32 to 34 hours a week, spending half their time in an intensive, individualized educational program to complete their high school education or GED, while the remainder of their time is spent in construction, community service, leadership development, employability, and various life skills classes. And whereas Brenda Plackins is the director of the Welty Environmental Center, partnering with the program for at-risk youth aged 16 to 24 years to provide a series of ecological fairs funded by Colonel Robert Morse Foundation Grant for six school district of Beloit elementary schools. And whereas students in second to fourth grade spend 45 minutes exploring 20 stations led by Fresh Start students featuring environmentally themed activities. And whereas Welty staff trained Fresh Start students to present the activities and to act as mentors, and also provided the materials for each station. And whereas elementary students visit stations that are meaningful to them with topics ranging from wild animals, the physics of water, insect body parts, which wouldn't be my favorite, I think, to the aftermath of earthquakes. Now therefore, the Beloit City Council proclaims our sincere appreciation and gratitude to Caleb Locrants, Community Actions, Beloit Fresh Start, and Brenda Plackins, Welty Environmental Center for their outstanding contributions, dedication, passion, and tireless efforts in advancing environmental conservation and education, and we recognize them as catalysts for positive change with the students in the school district of Beloit, presented this 19th day of February 2024.
If you could come forward. I love what you do. And Caleb, if you could come forward, and Brenda, and just speak a little bit about what you're doing. When I saw it, I was just totally just blown away with all the things that you're doing. So if you could just share a little bit.
Thank you. Thank you all very much for this honor. You know, we wouldn't be able to do this without the Beloit Fresh Start students. They're really, they're really what's driving the force behind this. You know, it's a really cool experience because our older students are able to interact with the younger students. They're able to really, like, you know, enforce positive change. They get to step into a mentorship role, and it's just a really good all-around thing. And then on top of all that, they get environmental ecological education on both ends, the older students and the younger students. So it's been a really, really positive experience.
Again, I feel like we're just here to facilitate the work that the Fresh Start students are doing. Probably you can't really get in to watch these eco-fairs happening in person, but you can see the Facebook posts. And to see the young kids look up to the older kids as they're presenting the science lessons is just wonderful to see that happening. So we're really grateful to have the opportunity to do it, and it's just been a wonderful experience for this school year.
And I think too what they're getting out of it with nature. And then I actually joined the students. I saw you were walking in the Merrill neighborhood, and I parked my car, literally parked my car, to get out because I was just so, I mean, it was like happy time. So I'm like, and it should be, to clean up the earth and make it better. So I just want to say thank you to you, and also cleaning up the neighborhood has been wonderful. So you're just expanding on that. So, yeah. Thank you. So we're not gonna let you go yet. We're gonna take some photos, if that's okay. If we could come out, whenever students here and it's relative to education, we're always gonna come to the front. We're gonna take pictures.
Pictures, pictures. But from behind the left. Thanks, everybody, for being here. Have a good night.
Yep, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Bye-bye. Thank you so much. Good to see you. We'll give people a chance to leave. You're certainly welcome to say, but we understand if you have to leave. Have a good afternoon. Next item, three D.
Introduction of newly hired or promoted employees.
Our city manager, Jerry Gabrielanos, will introduce the department heads with newly hired or promoted employees.
Just our Public Works Director, Bill Frisbead, tonight.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, y'all.
So we have one new staff member to introduce and three internal transfers. I'm here by myself tonight, though. But first is Juan Gonzalez. He is a new equipment operator in our Streets Group for us. He comes to us with a couple of years of experience in Public Works from a community in northern Illinois. Then our first transfer is Mark Holbert. He is going from an equipment operator in our Parks Group to an engineering technician. Mark has expressed desire in his couple of years here with the city to take on more responsibility and look for something that is physically, or not just physically challenging for him, but also mentally challenging. So he's taking on an engineering technician role, looking forward to that. David Blair has been with us for a couple of years also. He is transferring from being a fleet mechanic to a building maintenance specialist. This is one of the new positions that we created this year that's gonna be focusing on parks maintenance. And then our last one, Josh Shear, is transferring from our Director of Water Resources role to the Environmental Coordinator role. Josh previously held the Environmental Coordinator role before Director of Water Resources. So he's transitioning back to that position. So it'll be a seamless transition filling that one. Josh has been with us for about three years now.
Great.
Welcome to all of them.
Yeah, and congratulations starting on their promotion. Next item. At this point on our agenda, I think that what I would like to do is move item 11A up. Are there any objections from my fellow councilors to moving 11A up on this point of our agenda? Hearing none, I'd ask the city clerk to please read item 11A.
11A is Presentation of the Landmarks Commission Annual Report of 2023 Historic Preservation Activities.
And Celestino Ruffini, as Chair of the Landmarks Commission, is here to present the annual report.
All right. Good evening, President Duncan, councilors, city manager, and city staff. I'm Celestino Ruffini, the Chair of the Beloit Landmarks Commission, here for round two this month. So tonight's presentation, though, is the annual report for the commission, of which I am the current chair of. And I appreciate you taking time here at tonight's meeting to cover this report. The annual report is prepared by the commission each year stating the activities of the commission. As I hope you're all well aware, the ordinance requires that we provide a report on such activities back to you each year. This past year, the commission met a total of eight times in 2023. Currently, the commission is formed by seven members. The members you see on the screen, we've got a few that have been on the commission for a few years and some new members as well. I do want to take a moment to also recognize the Site Visit Subcommittee. The Site Visit Subcommittee meets as needed to view larger projects that the commission is getting ready to address and deal with. That Site Visit Subcommittee is made up of members on the commission, city staff, and as well the general public. The commission itself is a member now for two years, a member of the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions, of which we get our education from each year. And it really helps us make wise decisions when it comes to commission meetings. Most importantly, though, on the slide on the screen, I want to thank Hillary Rotman, our staff liaison, as she does a lot of the major lifting for the commission and really serves as a great resource for the work we do. So the primary work of the commission centers around the application you see on the screen. We call those COAs, or Certificates of Appropriateness. COAs are designed for property owners to deal with designating or dealing with alterations to their designated landmarks, sites, or structures within a historic district or locally landmarked structures. Commonly, reasons people would come to the commission and file a COA typically involve roof, gutter, sidewalk, driveway, chimney, fences, windows, and doors. So really, anything you see from the exterior of the property of a historic structure, those would be the primary ones that they had come to us for. Modifications, renovations within the structure typically are something we do not see at the commission nor have purview to make changes or suggestions to. The current state of preservation in Beloit puts us at 471 total designated landmarks within the city. That's, the majority are within our four historic districts, of which we have a few on each side of the river. Bluff Street, just to our west, is 115 properties currently. The College Park District, which notably is near Beloit College, at 156 properties. Our smallest district of four homes is the Merrill Street District, right near the riverfront, west of the river. And then the Milwaukee Road Emerson Street Residential Historic District of 150 properties. In addition to the four historic districts, there's a number of buildings and landmarks in the community that are individually designated as historic structures, of which there's 46. All the properties, all 471, are eligible for tax credits, which allow them to improve their properties and reap a financial benefit to do so. A brief breakdown of the COAs that were submitted in 2023. More than half of the COAs that were submitted to the city were approved by staff. And once again, thank Hillary for her work on doing staff reviews of COAs. As far as total numbers, COA applications in '23, we had one less than we had in '22. We had 30 in '22, so we had 29 in '23. And you can see a variety of different topics. There's no necessarily rhyme or reason to what COAs are. They're sort of all over the board. But most importantly, we're just thankful when property owners buy by the ordinances that the city has in place to come forward and do work the right way. So, yeah, a variety of different COAs. To conclude the annual report, I've got some remarks about these final three slides. I want to share with you a project that's been a result of immense collaboration between organizations, specifically the city of Beloit and Visit Beloit. It was a unique moment where my professional role as CEO of Visit Beloit and my personal role as the Chair of the Landmarks Commission could result in something with a positive impact on both residents and visitors to Beloit. Visit Beloit has launched several Passport Trails for anyone to experience themed adventures throughout our destination the last few years. Some of the trails have been in existence for a while, and some are new to us in 2024. It's been a priority of the Landmarks Commission, and especially our staff liaison, Hillary Rotman, to modernize our work in historic preservation for our residents. It's a steep challenge, especially considering that we're still using primitive materials from nearly three decades ago to educate residents and property owners how to properly preserve their home to the standard set by planning and development. Our 417 historic structures should not only be well-preserved, but also celebrated for the value they provide to our city. And that's where my roles in both organizations came into play. So at Visit Beloit, we recognize the role historic preservation plays in not only creating a vibrant community for people to live in, but also an attractive destination that people want to come to and explore. We've been educating visitors about our wonderful craft breweries, outdoor art, delicious cafes, and tantalizing tacos, but we decided to launch a new trail solely focused on the importance of heritage tourism to Beloit. We had several partners and organizations contribute ideas to this trail, including the city of Beloit, Beloit College, Roy Chapman Andrews Society, and Beloit Historical Society. So you see on the screen a number of different trails. And the newest Beloit and Beyond Passport Trail is the first one to your left on the screen, the Beloit and Beyond Historical Walking Trail. It features 88 stops across nine different themed categories. Users can explore the Beloit College campus, the Near East Side College Park Neighborhood, or the beautiful homes on Bluff and Merrill Street and in the Milwaukee and Emerson Residential Historic District. You can head to the city center, and you'll be mesmerized by the charming downtown and riverfront. You can explore history by learning about Beloit's native son, Roy Chapman Andrews, or take a regional drive, the only non-walking component to the trail, to see a few other major sites that exist around the city. The trail is extremely user-friendly and completely digital. As you see on the screen, I'll walk you through the steps. On the homepage of the trail, you can read a summary of what you'll experience while exploring and get a preview of all 88 stops. You can then filter the trails by the name of the trail stop or by which one's your closest to, or by the theme you want to explore. You can also view all the stops on a map as well. Once you're at a stop, you can read a description of the location, and you can check in to mark that you were there. What's exciting is that in addition to learning, you can also earn prizes. You can earn a custom trail sticker after making it to 10 stops or a beautiful custom poster of Beloit once you complete at least half of the trail. I would like to say today, I saw going out in the mail at the office, a few posters. So I know we had a few complete the trail here in the last month. For anyone who's completed all the trails we offer by end of the year, whether it be our Taco Trail, Outdoor Art, or the others, you'll be entered to win, a chance to win a prize package valued at $625. The Historical Walking Trail's primary goal is to get the public, both residents and visitors, actively participating, enjoying the plethora of things to see and do in Beloit, and become more engaged in our community, especially via knowledge of our history and architecture. The trail also serves as an educational tool for the Landmarks Commission, but because we can lean on it to show both new and current residents best practices of preserving different styles of architecture that exist in Beloit. The trail and all those offered by Visit Beloit can be found at visitbeloit.com/passport-trails. It's my pleasure to use my roles in the community to help bring this project to fruition, both as CEO of Visit Beloit and as Chair of the Landmarks Commission. With that, that concludes our report. Happy to answer any questions or take comments.
Thank you, Celestino. At this time, I will open the floor. Counselor Blakely, did you have a comment?
Yeah, very quickly. Thank you so much, Celestino. I love the Passport Program. I just wondered, are city councilors eligible for prizes at the end of the year?
Absolutely. So long as you're not an employee or board member of Visit Beloit. And Regina will be coming off the board in months, so you'll be eligible soon. But, yes, city council members would be eligible.
Thank you, and great work. Nice presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
No, well, I do have a comment. As usual, you're just doing things up to par. Come a long way from, in the 80s, when we had a bus down from Green Bay, and I had to take him on a cemetery tour. Even then, we knew about Roy Chapman Andrews. But this is, this is great. It's been great progress, and thanks for all the work you've done.
Thank you.
And just for people who are watching in the public, if you could just give that, if they wanted to take part in those trails, what was that address again?
Yeah, the website is visitbeloit.com/passport-trails. And you can also just go to visitbeloit.com and go look at the main page. It's around the homepage to access all the trails.
So that's exciting. Thank you, Celestino.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next, item four.
Item four is public hearings. There are none. Item five is public comments.
We've reached the point on our agenda for residents to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. Council members may not act on any request at this meeting, but may refer a speaker to staff for assistance. We ask that you please hold your comments to three minutes or less and refrain from personal attacks of any kind. Public comment is a courtesy, and we expect everyone to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Speakers are asked to complete a public comment form. Madam Clerk, were there any public comment forms submitted prior to the meeting?
Brittany Keys is up.
Sure, and... I was just gonna say, he could just wait until, because we'll, we'll take, also, I'll ask people from the audience to come up, so no worries. Okay, can you please state your name and place of residence for the record?
Yes. My name is Brittany Keys, and I reside in Beloit. And thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm here to share a couple stories, and really, it's resounding and surrounding keeping our kids and our families, but really our kids at the center. So the last few weeks, a couple weeks, I had the opportunity to go present to several different high school classes. different high school classes, speaking to, you may have heard or seen, I'm helping lead air quality monitoring project. So speaking to impacts of air pollution, climate change, and then looking more into environmental justice and other environmental exposures and impact on health. And when I was first introduced, the, some of the students, and they were, they were tired, they, and I introduced myself and shared how I volunteered at the elementary schools and sometimes dressed up as a butterfly, and they're like, to their teacher, where did you find her? And then, as I was going through the presentation, starting, they said, you know, how many slides do you have? But then, as I got to the end, you could have heard a pin drop. Because some of the magnitude of this information and some of the exposures that are reality are very significant. So I did want to say thank you very much to President Duncan and council, and I look forward to, I'll be presenting, hopefully, in an upcoming meeting about this. But one of the profound things was is that these students care a lot. So I was able to come to the same class another time. Several students, actually, six, six or seven students wanted to work with me. And so I was super excited, and I said, okay, so, so what do you want to do? And they, the first thing they said is, you know, we see in the trash and the garbage around town, and you know, it bothers us. And I was like, oh. As plogging lover. And so they were saying that one of the things they would like is to have recycling receptacles available to them and around the city, and even in their schools. So looking at ways to better dispose of items. And then the other thing was talking about a community garden. And they said that they've been to the Merrill Sharing Community Garden, and they love it, and just talking about the, that they would love to see one on the west side of town, as well as, now, these are all from the students, right? So I'm just giving voice to these amazing students, looking to get involved at the elementary school, too, and helping how this could be a resource for them, and give something for these kids to look forward to and to be a resource, and for lasting even after these kids graduate. And I shared how sometimes with recycling, if it's been brought up before, it's been said, well, they might not be used right. And a very profound thing that one of the students said was, often, things are decided for us and given to us, and without asking, and there's things we don't want or need, and so we don't use them. But if, you know, you come and ask me what we want, then we'll tell you. And so I just felt like that was extremely profound, and I wanted to come here today and just give that voice on these things that these students were asking. They came up with it. I was just there supporting and writing and trying not to cry, because it was just so exciting to be part of that. So just sharing these different ideas of these students who really do care a lot. So thank you for your time and the consideration, and hopefully, we can work together more with, bring these things to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Are there any other members of the public who did not sign up who would like to address the council this evening? Come forward, please, and state your name and city of residence for the record.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Jeff Vanderjeskey. I'm a resident here in Beloit. I live on Johnson Street, near House. And so, again, good evening to you and welcome to me, because this is something very new for me. This is new territory. I generally have a different, different type of a presence, but due to some issues, I'm not going to be at my best, so I'll make it brief and quick. And as a resident, I'm very concerned about a lot of different things. I'm a new resident to the area, and with that, just comes my energy to go ahead and make whatever I can around me better, which is nature, and children, and some other things, too. But I'm really interested in how things work around here. I hear news, but I don't know what news is. I've been a part of some extreme events over the last month that have shaken me to the soul, but it has turned me into something else. I feel like a freshman again up here. It's kind of funny when you're a freshman and you got to walk into that school, that first three weeks, even at college level, you just start just a mad mess, but you just want to do something well. I'm in, I'm rebranding right now. I'm rebranding my research and development business, which I thought was dead, along with everything else, to include myself, but it's come back, and this one, this one's on fire. And if you don't want me, then I'll go somewhere else, because I'm not even sure about Michigan, because I'm Jack Pine, Jack Pine of the Pine People. Hoot, hoot. Research and development conservation is my game. Nature wins for me. Research has brought me here, and it's very invigorating, especially on the fact today's President's Day, isn't it? Yeah, I went to the bank, and I realized today was President's Day. And then I had to look at my keychain to recognize a president. I don't know. Do you recognize that? No. I'll give it to, do you take things and pass them?
Sure.
Yeah, I would hope so. That's my keychain. I have other things, too. I don't want to go too deep. I think I have three minutes left. I support conversation efforts. I love grassroots. Last year, I heard a conversation on the news about no mow, and I got so excited, I thought, wow, there's a movement here in Beloit that actually is grassroots, and people are listening. But you're not. Some of us cut our grass, and I don't think the, or some of us didn't cut our grass. Most of us cut our grass, and I didn't think there's one place the city didn't mow it to three inches off the ground. Why do you cut your grass that short? You don't know your weather patterns? Your grass needs at least twelve inches to be healthy, so jack up your mowers. It's a part of an urban farming program that you're kind of developing, or you're kind of looking at?
Time.
Time? So with that, I'd like to go ahead and recommend that you continue your no mow. I want you to go even further into a no pesticide, no herbicide movement, which is something that's used in Arizona in the hemp agriculture program that started at the beginning. No pesticides, no herbicides are important to grassroots programs. With that, I have data that I can present to you and other experiments that are coming in the future. I have it all, and I look forward to maybe a conversation with one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to address the council this Final call. Are there any members of the public who did not sign up that would like to address the council this evening? Madam Clerk, were there any public comments submitted by email?
There was not.
Public comment is now closed.
Item six is consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a councilor member's sole request, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda.
Would any councilor like anything removed from the consent agenda?
Yes.
Vice President Forbeck, what item would that be?
That would be six C.
So noted. Six C will be removed. May I please have a motion? Were there any other items, councilors? Okay. May I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including item six A, six B, and six D? Is there a motion?
I say move.
Move by Vice President Forbeck. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Blakely. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
Item six C is consideration of Resolution two thousand and twenty-four zero one two, authorizing the Downtown Beloit Upper Floor Housing Grant Program.
Director Drew Pennington will present on this item.
Good evening. City Council previously extended the life of several tax incremental financing districts in order to benefit affordable housing and improve the city's housing stock by distributing grants, loans, or developer incentives. The TIF Housing Plan, approved on November twentieth of last year, allocated three hundred and sixty-three dollars to be, to be matching grants to downtown property owners within the bid or the Business Improvement District for the creation of new upper-floor housing units. City staff developed the attached in your packet Downtown Beloit Upper Floor Housing Grant Program Guide to implement this new program. The program guide includes application and review process, eligibility timelines, and application forms. The purpose of this new program is to offer financial incentives to property owners to create new housing units in the upper floors of existing buildings, as downtown residents enhance the economic vitality of the downtown area. Eligible improvements include upgrading electrical and plumbing, bathrooms and kitchens, windows and doors, painting, flooring, and some soft costs. The minimum project cost is twenty thousand dollars. To maximize the effect of the program, applicants are required to provide matching funds. Grant awards are limited to fifty percent of the total project cost, not exceeding thirty thousand dollars per housing unit. Each property may only receive one grant per calendar year for no more than four housing units per grant award. This program will be primarily administered by the Downtown Beloit Association. DBA staff will disseminate and process applications, and the DBA Design Committee will make award determinations. Once each project has been completed and approved, reimbursement can be requested from the City of Beloit. The grants will be awarded on a first-come, first-served basis while funding is available. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from councilors? Vice President Forbeck?
I just have one more question, Drew. After speaking to one or two people from the downtown area, if, if the Downtown Beloit Association Design Committee does not approve this, is there a way for them to come back again, maybe with a change of plans, or how is that procedure going to work?
Well, if the past is a guide, you know, the Design Committee reviews applications now for grants for facades and signage. Yes, typically, the feedback is given, and they're, they have a chance to reapply.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any further comments, questions? And if someone's interested, and they're downtown, they just need to contact you and the downtown...
Myself, or Downtown Beloit.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you, Drew. And I'm sure we'll see more of that in the Beloit Report and on some of our social media that goes out, so thank you. May I please have a motion to approve the resolution?
Move.
Move by Counselor Levy, seconded by Counselor Day. Are there any further questions or discussion? At this time, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
Item seven is licenses. There are none this evening. Item eight is ordinances. Eight A is consideration of substitute amendment number one to ordinance number thirty-eight twenty-four, to amend sections one point seven three sub one sub B, one point D, one seven three sub one sub F, one, and one point eight nine sub five sub A, and to repeal section one point seven nine sub four sub C four of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit pertaining to the Board of Ethics, the Community Development Authority, and the Traffic Review Committee.
This is a second reading of an ordinance. May I please have a motion to approve the ordinance as presented?
Move.
Move by Counselor Terrell, seconded by Counselor Day. Are there any further questions or discussion? I just wanted to mention that I appreciate the staff in updating this ordinance and maintaining the requirement for city residents, so just wanted to say that. If there are no further questions or discussion, at this time, we have a motion to approve the ordinance as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
Eight B is consideration of ordinance number thirty-eight twenty-six, to amend section twenty-five point zero four sub four sub D of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit pertaining to officials authorized to issue citations.
This is a second reading of an ordinance. May I please have a motion to approve the ordinance as presented?
I say move.
Move by Counselor Blakely. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Adama. Are there any questions or discussion? At this time, there is a motion and a second to approve the ordinance as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
Eight C is consideration of ordinance number thirty-eight oh nine, amending sections one point eight four sub two, one point eight four sub three sub B, one point eight four sub three sub C, and one point eight four sub four sub C, one point eight four sub five sub C three, one point eight four sub five sub E, and one point eight four sub nine of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit pertaining to quorums and membership for the Landmarks Commission.
This is a second reading of an ordinance. May I please have a motion to approve the ordinance as presented?
I say move.
Move by Vice President Forbeck, seconded by Counselor Blakely. Are there any questions or discussion? I would just like to thank the staff for cleaning up the ordinance and also adding the appropriate updates. If there are no further questions or discussion, at this time, we have a motion to approve the ordinance as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
Item eight D is consideration of ordinance number thirty-eight twenty-five, amending section two point zero six of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit pertaining to the Order of Business for City Council Meetings.
Our city attorney, Elizabeth Krieger, will present at this time.
Good evening. The City Council President requested that the attached proposed ordinance be considered. In essence, it's memorializing the practice of the current president. The proposed ordinance clarifies the process for adding an item to the agenda. Current code provides that the agenda is prepared by the city clerk, reviewed by the city manager, and ultimately approved by the city council president. The draft ordinance clarifies that an item may be added, an item may be added, excuse me, to the agenda by the city council president, the city manager, or the city attorney. An item may also be added for discussion upon the written request of three council members. The proposed ordinance further clarifies the timing of preparation of the agenda, which is dictated by deadlines to get proper public notice to the city's official newspaper and to meet current publishing deadlines. I'm happy to answer any questions. This is on your agenda for first reading only.
Thank you. This is a first reading of the ordinance. Is there a motion to lay the ordinance over for a second reading? Move by Counselor Terrell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Forbeck. Are there any questions or discussion? At this time, there is a motion and a second to lay the ordinance over for a second reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
Item nine is appointments. The individuals named below have been nominated for a seat on a city board, committee, or commission. Each nomination is subject to confirmation by the city council. Approval of appointment will be accomplished by one motion unless a council member requests to take up a nomination separately, in which event the nomination will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda.
May I please have a motion to approve appointments as presented? Move by Counselor Terrell. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Day. Are there any questions or discussion? At this time, there is a motion and a second to approve the appointments. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
Item ten is counselor activities and upcoming events.
Let's start with Counselor Blakely.
Thank you, Madam President. Along with Regina, I attended, I mean, we were in adjacency, anyway, attended the sixtieth, the sixth annual Black Women's, Black Women in Business Expo at the Eclipse Center. Vicki Lynn, who passed away last year, was duly honored, especially when Regina gave her speech. Will you be mentioning that otherwise?
Of course.
Okay. Well, there were some AV problems for a short while, so to get everybody's attention, wake everybody up, and make sure that, excuse me, Vicki Lynn, the founder of this wonderful event, was honored, Regina said, whenever I raise my hand, please say Vicki Lynn's legacy. So let's all do that one time right now. Vicki Lynn's legacy. Yeah. Thank you very much to all the participants and to Regina for waking everybody up and duly honoring Vicki Lynn.
Thank you, Counselor Blakely. Counselor Levy. Counselor Adama.
Nothing too specific, just, you know, by monthly reminder that times are really stressful for a lot of people, and make sure that you're kind to each other, and taking time for yourself, and getting nice full breaths, you know, making sure that your posture is really good and you're not holding your stress in your shoulders. So I'm just going to give a little bit of advice and move on.
Thank you, Counselor Adama. That's a very, that's a great message.
I'm trying.
Next, Counselor Terrell.
Thank you, President Duncan. On Friday the sixteenth, which would have been last week, I was invited to, I was invited to Milwaukee, Wisconsin, to be on a popular African-American radio station known as WNOV Community Voice with Keith Paris. Mr. Paris asked me questions about what inspired me to run and what kinds of activities I was involved in prior to becoming a city councilor. And obviously, a lot of people know my story. I don't want to get all into it, if not, just look me up on Facebook or Google me or whatever you want to do. He also focused on, he also focused on African-Americans getting more involved in voting for national, state, local offices, and was curious of my... voting for national, state, and local offices and was curious of my opinions of how to drive that turnout, being an African-American representative myself. I spoke highly to that. I spoke highly on encouraging more candidates to run for office, those of whom are of more community-minded grassroots leaders. Those who are not influenced by money and power, but influenced by selfishness and making a real common sense difference. Also expressed that these are the values that I stand on and what ultimately got me elected into office to be sitting here today. We also had a great conversation on the show about, you know, he asked me questions. We had just real good conversation. He's, he asked me questions about, hold on, where was I at? I wrote it down. Sorry about that. He asked me questions about our great city of Beloit and my wonderful colleagues on the city council, all which I spoke highly of, of course. And, you know, things like that. A lot of them were actually very knowledgeable about the city of Beloit, which kind of surprised me a little bit. They asked questions about the casino and all that kind of stuff. So I just kind of, you know, just had fun with the guys on the show. And you can pull up the interview from three days ago on YouTube. It's at Community Voice with Keith Parris. And my interview starts at around the 26, 26 and a half mark. And you can just see me on there. I don't want to get too much into detail, but, well, we made the conversation pretty interesting. And like I say, I represent the city of Beloit, not just one demographic of people, just not one democra, not one area of Beloit. Even when I spoke on where I grew up in the Meryl neighborhood, I, I expressed that I represent the entire city of Beloit as a whole, regardless of where I come from, regardless of race. And one thing that I also pointed out that I want to make clear is that when somebody comes to vote for me or anybody else, especially if it's, you know, based on race or whatever, I always say policy first, policy first. Listen to what I'm saying, listen to what I'm doing first. Everything else comes after that. So if somebody's looking to vote for me because I'm an African-American male, I'm telling you to look at what I'm talking about, what I, what I'm running on and what I want to do when I'm on the city council first before you look at those other things. So I expressed that in the interview and I will leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Terrell. Next, Councilor Day.
No report. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Forbeck.
Well, I have to say that the entire council plus wonderful staff had the opportunity last Monday morning to hear from our city organizations, all seeking money for youth services. And if you ever want to hear sort of what's best about Beloit, you need to be there on that Monday and see all the people who care and who have great ideas, great programs already, many of them for youth, but they would appreciate some of this grant money that we have available to increase their participation and let them help even more of our youth have meaningful things to do. So that was a great morning last Monday. And anyway, from there, I'm going on. Regina and I served on Appointment Review Committee where we actually had some great people applying to be on our committees. And also then I am on the EOC Equal Opportunities Commission Committee. And here's an example of why we were cleaning up some of our ordinances. The EOC has an important job to do in the community. And very often, we couldn't get this done because it was hard to get quorum. And so the EOC has been the first committee, I think, in, in our city structure who changed the amount of people that we have on the committee to one less, and that's made all the difference. We have just three super people. Not talking about me, I'm just the council rep. But they are passionate about things, they learn, and we're, you're going to be hearing some activities that are coming up within the next couple of months that are going to be significant. So I'm excited again about being on the EOC. So that's, that's it.
Yeah, we did that. Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Vice President Forbeck. Now for my report. First, I want to thank everyone that gave public comment tonight. We want to hear your voices, so thank you for that. Next, I want to recognize that we have students in the audience and I want to thank you for being here as well. Hopefully you'll be encouraged to run for city council. Now for my councilor activities. I participated in the practice interviews with the students at Turner High School. I attended the Greater Beloit Economic Development Corporation Executive Committee Meeting and along with my council colleagues, we listened to the opera presentations in regard to the youth programming funds. I also spoke at the Black History Month event hosted by the Beloit Coalition of Churches and I was a speaker at the Black Her Story Day Black Women in Business Expo and attended that alone with Councilor Blakely. In addition, I went to the Rock County Restoration Substance Abuse Recovery Center Open House. The new center is located at 2091 Shopee Road, Suite B, which is next to Vince's Hot Dogs. They will offer services to help restore lives for people who are struggling with drug and alcohol addiction. While I was there, I learned that there have been six overdose deaths in the Beloit area. This is an epidemic that is impacting many individuals, lives, and families in our Beloit community. The recovery program will provide a safe place with people who have walked that path and have overcome. If you would like more information, call 608-346-4832. In addition to that, I attended the Appointment Review Committee Meeting. If you are interested in putting your talent to good use, please consider volunteering to serve on one of our commissions. And I was on that committee along with Vice President Forbeck. If a member is interested, you can call Rebecca Wallandall at 608-364-6682. I also want to give special thanks to the outgoing officers of the Appointment Review Committee, the Chair Dan Gifford and Vice Chair Daniel Borowski, for your leadership and continued service. And congratulations to our new chair and vice chair, they are Darrell Saladar and Paul Martin. So congratulations to you as well. Hopefully others will be encouraged to roll up their sleeves and help make our city even better. In closing, I just want to give a heartfelt thank you to our phenomenal city staff in all the departments. So I just can't call out one person. There's just too many who are doing so many great things. I see firsthand how hard you're working each day. Trying to prioritize while doing your daily duties is not easy, but I hope you know that it has not gone unnoticed and that each of you are very much appreciated. Keep up the great work. Even as council president, I've tried to do a better job at really reaching out to each individual person when I see that you're doing something. I've just been so amazed. It's hard because we get so many calls from residents and then you also get asked from us as councilor. So I just want you to know that we really, truly, truly do appreciate it. Also, I would just like to say to our Beloit community, people who are watching in the public, to let's choose to spread more kindness and love throughout our community because the only way we get things done or make our city and the world better is by working together. So this ends the council reports for this evening. Next, item 11.
Item 11 is city manager presentation, 11A.
This item was already moved up on the agenda, so next item.
11B is city manager update.
Our city manager, Jerry Gabrielas, will provide us with an update.
Thanks, everyone. I was out on vacation last week, but briefly, I had conversations with Mark Perry and just recently with Caleb and to address one of the public comments made about the potential for a community garden to go into Brook Street Park. I spoke with Bill about it this morning. It's something that I think would be a worthwhile location, given that there's not anything there currently. There would be a cost with the water hookup, but we'll talk more about it. Anyway, just wanted to let, let you know that. And then, fun fact, 17 years ago today, Bill Frisbee's first day with the city of Beloit.
Wow. Yeah. Happy anniversary, Bill. And I think Julie had one too, didn't she? Did you have one too, Julie?
Get an update on LinkedIn about Julie's first day.
Yes.
25 years on January 3rd.
Way to go. Now, did we miss anybody else? Okay, all right. Thank you for that, Jerry.
Item 12 is reports from boards and city officers. There isn't any, but I want to take this time to remind everybody that there is not an election in the city of Beloit tomorrow. There is not a primary in the city of Beloit tomorrow. And number 13 is adjournment.
Okay. Okay. The motion of adjournment.
Second.
Okay, we had a motion made by Councilor Adama, seconded, I think, was it Councilor Terrell? Are there any questions or discussion? At this time, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes. We are now adjourned. This ends our city council meeting for this evening.
We'll sign for you guys.